Gentlemen, and welcome to the Tuesday, February 27th, 2024 School Committee Meeting here at Tinsborough High School PDC Room. My name's Anthony Tenerella, I'm the Chair. I will officially call this meeting to order, and we will start with introductions to my left.
Bari Teague, Student Representative.
Jeff Boe.
Becky Stanton.
Mike Woodlock, Assistant Superintendent.
Hi, Mike Flanagan, Superintendent.
Danielle Athanas.
Ryan McMahon.
Dustine Puma.
Rob Mullen.
Good evening, Joe Messina, Business Administrator.
Dan Hogan, Assistant Business Administrator.
Dan Kacidlaw, Finance Committee.
Thank you, everyone. If you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. At this time, I want to take a motion to approve the February 6th, 2024 School Committee Minutes.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? I carry 7-0-0. Citizens' time. See none. Correspondents?
None at this time, Mr. Chair.
Personnel. Notification of resignation. Go ahead, Mr. Chair.
So, we have, yes, uh, I've already made you retire, resigned as a custodian from the second shift, Tinsborough Middle School.
Awesome. Thank you, because I would have butchered that name. Share the success, Bari.
All right, so at the elementary school, before vacation, Mr. Messina, the TPS Business Manager, and Ms. Demmers, uh, from Whitson's Food Service, met with students from TES to discuss state and federal guidelines we are required to follow. Our students appreciated the opportunity to share their feedback about the breakfast and lunch options. Josh Funk, children's book author, is coming to TES on March 12th. Josh is the author of the Lady Pancake and Serve French Toast series, How to Code a Sandcastle, and Lost in the Library, just to name a few. As part of our March Madness Picture Book Contest, Book Competition, uh, classes have already begun reading Josh's funny books. We will have a final vote for TES's favorite book next month. A special thank you to Mr. Lewis, grade five teacher, for arranging this visit, and to the PTO for co-sponsoring our annual author visit. TES participated in the Kids' Heart Challenge, raising over $4,700 for the American Heart Association. Thank you to Ms. Shepherd, uh, PE teacher, for promoting health and wellness within our school community. Thank you to all the families who, that contributed to this important cause. Tomorrow, TES will welcome 20 educators and administrators from the Drakehead Public Schools, as they spend this morning observing and meeting with our staff to discuss our recent transition to a structured literacy approach and year two of the implement, implementation of the HMH into reading program. At the middle school, we had a great week prior to vacation, updating ELA in math diagnostics, and celebrating Valentine's Day with candy grams. We are gearing up for March Madness with a week-long set of events culminating with the Sham Rock Shake Dance. The teachers will have sample furniture to try out with their classes as part of the mills, as part of the building process. We also have the celebration of learnings coming up on March 14th. At the high school, theater is performing for the upcoming METG competition, which take place, which takes place on March 3rd at Leominster High School. Best of luck with the performance. Girls' basketball, boys' basketball, and ice hockey have all received MIAA state tournament games this week. Both basketball teams, both, both basketball teams received an opening round bye and will know their opponents later in the week, while ice hockey takes on Mizzou on Wednesday night at 7:00 PM. As a reminder, trimester two concludes on March 8th, with report cards being, report cards being available on March 15th. Congratulations to February Students of the Month, Alyssa Beuloo, sorry, uh, Jillian Paray, Charles McFagin, and Melanie Colleton. Thank you.
Thank you, Bari.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take item nine out of order.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? I carry 7-0-0.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so we're going to talk about our FY25 budget development process. Uh, we're going to then kick it to Mr. Messina, who really get into and dive into the numbers and really kind of explain where we are, uh, as an initial budget presentation of FY25. But I do want to know, I just want to provide a little backdrop. As you know, when we, when we talk about our budget, everything we do is driven by our strategy for district improvement. So, we begin having meetings with the administrative team in November, and we talk about our wants and our needs and our hopes going forward, and really get a sense of what we need for FY25 as things unfold over the first trimester. Uh, then we use December, uh, myself and Mr. Messina, to stay in constant communication with, uh, Town Manager Lloyd Zell and Dave Andrus and Cat Foster from the Town Administration, to really, uh, lay the foundation of a collegial working relationship moving forward. And it's always been collegial, it's always been great, and we always resolve things together, which is something I'm, I'm very proud of. Uh, in January, we continue to refine the numbers. Uh, Mr. Messina, throughout this process, meets with the Budget Subcommittee. We talk about expenses, he talks about revenues, and we project where things are going to be. All along, we're informing the Town Administration as to where we are and where we think we're going to land. In February, Mr. Messina and I go over and make a formal presentation, by Mr. Messina and I, Mr. Messina and I sit there, uh, make a formal presentation to the Town Administration as to where we are at the budget and where we think we will project to land tonight with our initial budget presentation. So it is a collaborative process that starts at the school level with a focus on our strategy for district improvement, constant ongoing communication with the Town Administration, working together to get to where we are now. It is not, uh, it's not like it used to be years and years ago, where it was fighting for every nickel. We understand and recognize there's one part of money. How can we all maximize every dollar in this community? So, very happy with the process, uh, as it went forward, and I'm very happy with where we are tonight. So at this point, I will kick it to Mr. Messina to do his magic over there, I know it's not magic, and, uh, and present the budget numbers to you.
Thank you, Dr. Flanagan, and I know the Superintendent will always say to the committee, we're not always looking just to pick up where we're currently and move it forward into next year. Um, having said that, where we generally start the budget development is with this year's staffing, and, um, how that relates to where we thought we're going to be in terms of a budget, and then going for, forward, knowing that we have a target growth number to hit from the town, what model we can create that will get us to the 2.7% growth, um, that the town is expecting, uh, from our budget. So, as always, our budget development starts with staffing. Um, this current budget for next year, um, we have a model that has 240.3 staff members. Um, you'll see that's seven and a half percent lower than last year's budget. However, the current FY24 staffing is based on 243.3 staff people. So this budget represents an actual net three positions that will be reduced, um, to achieve the 2.7% growth. Included in the number in this current model, as I've, I've spoke to the committee a number of times, and the Superintendent has spoke to you, about our desire to build a model that will add a literacy coach, um, based upon all of the literacy work we have been doing the past two years, uh, with Keys to Literacy. Uh, Mr. Woodlock, uh, comments on many meetings about the work we have done with them. For them to extricate themselves from our district, we need to have a literacy coach in place to basically continue that work and, um, get the most for our investment with Keys to Literacy. So, it's, it's a net of three reductions, but in this model, we do target four positions to reduce. Those 240.3 staff people create a salaries budget of 19.8 million, which is some $300,000 more than last year, or 1.8% growth from the budgeted number for the 247.8 staff people. Um, one of the next larger expenses, uh, for your budget is out-of-district tuitions. And again, these are the students whose, uh, needs are beyond our classrooms and need to be serviced in other environments. And that includes students from age three to age 22, so beyond the typical high school years. At this time, we're looking at approximately 2.6 million, based upon the current roster projections. That is actually down from last year's budget of 2.7, primarily because that roster of students is always fluid, that can change from year over year. There are move-outs, there, there are successes where we can get students back into our classrooms, and, uh, eventually, students will age out once they hit age 22, or graduate from their out-of-district program.
Mr. Messina, if I could, please?
Yes.
I just want to, um, welcome Murray, and just to let you know that Mr. Messina just started his presentation, so those are the first two things that we've started speaking of.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, the next largest expense is transportation, uh, both regular education and specialized, which are the vans. Um, you can see those two combined actually have an increase of 238,000, or 13 and a half percent, primarily driven by the cost of specialized transportation. Uh, we had been locked in on a rate with DBus for a number of years, and last May, they actually introduced a new pricing model for the next three years. We are currently in year one of that pricing model, and these numbers represent year two of that pricing model. Utilities, um, we have been fortunate to have some very previously locked-in rates for both electricity and natural gas. They are both coming to an end. Um, in the case of natural gas, a rate that was locked in back in April of 2021, um, when the rates were much cheaper, and this utility, uh, we're not currently locked into a price, but it is my hope that we can get to a target price, that we can lock in sometime within the next month or so, that would lock in at these prices. Hopeful, we're not there yet with the numbers I've been receiving, uh, from our power vendor, uh, power options, um, but we hope to get there. Beyond the four large expenses, here are the other expenses by Budget Center. Nothing is changing major compared to last year's budget, with the exception of the technology line. We have some new subscriptions coming on for our firewalls, and, uh, Mr. Piper, our tech director, suggests an additional 25,000 to address those subscriptions. The undistributed grant funding goes up slightly, but that is primarily targeted grants that are not included in your budget model, and includes any funds from the federal grants that are targeted for, um, private school, Notre Dame, as well as, um, home-school families that have access to those funds. And we are in the beginning phase of our accreditation cycle. Um, at this time, we're setting aside $5,000. We will need to, um, appoint a chairperson to lead the accreditation process, as well as begin to, um, host a pre-visit visit, I guess, um, what NEAS does, they come in, um, it's an overnight for a few members. It is also my understanding, Mr. Ogden, Mr. Ogden tells us that the accreditation process as it now runs is not the huge cost that it was the last time we went through this.
Years ago, we budgeted $30,000 for accreditation, uh, and now it's a fraction of that cost.
Correct.
Which is great.
Um, so that's your total expenses for your operation of 26.7 million. In addition to the school committee budget, as voted by the townspeople at town meeting, we also have other revenues that are offsetting, um, that I'll cover in a few moments. They are projected some $100,000 less than where we were last year. And then we get a credit from Valley Collaborative, uh, lot, uh, every year for any excess tuitions. Um, we are hopeful that that credit next year will amount to $150,000, wherein this year's budget, uh, we budgeted $75,000. So, after reviewing the revenue, which I'll do in a moment, that gets your school committee budget request, uh, to the town of 23.4 million, which is $616,000 higher than this year's budget, or 2.7% growth. So, Mr. Woodlock, if we could just slide up to revenues, please? So, that 3.1 million that's represented for the other revenue offset on the cover page is represented here by grant revenue, um, going down $203,000, and that is primarily due to the fact that we are losing, or we are expending the last of our COVID S R3 grant funding this year. Um, that, that accounted for $300,000 of this year's offsets. Um, that is not available this year, so that's primary reason that our grant figure is decreasing by 200,000. Tuition revenues are projected to be slightly higher, that is both preschool and the exchange program here at the high school. Athletic revenues, at this time, we are projecting to be the same. And the other source revenues, Medicaid reimbursements, again, we use a three-year average, so that is projecting higher. School choice funding, we hope to have, uh, a healthier balance in school choice at the end of this year to bring forward to next year's budget. Again, as always, we utilize, um, an additional $50,000 in next year's receipts for next year's budget. Parking is projected slightly higher. Use of facilities is the least with Valley at the same figure. And a slight decrease in circuit breaker, and again, that is primarily driven by the roster that is currently in place for, for out-of-district students. And, um, again, based upon the volatility of our special education population and that cost, we anticipate increasing this bed stabilization balance to $449,000, and utilizing in this budget, if we need to, all of those funds, um, to get a, achieve a balanced budget. In the last revenue funding, um, the town had given us $40,000 for this year's summer programming. Um, we understood that was the last of the ARPA money we would have for summer programming, so we continue to operate the summer programming, but we do not have that revenue offset. But that extended school year programming is in the budget presented above. So that is the 3.1 million in revenue offsets that get us down to that 23.4 million budget. Questions?
Awesome. I'll open it up to the board.
What positions will be cut?
Uh, it's too early to tell. Um, right now, we, we have a lot of, uh, positions that we're looking at and having conversations about right now. Uh, but quite honestly, we need to go through our core selection process, we need to see where the kids are going to sign up, we need to, uh, really understand class size. We're, uh, one of the things we're keeping an eye on right now is kindergarten, uh, registration enrollment, that happens in the next couple of weeks. So, uh, we are looking, um, everywhere in the district.
Um, if, if we decide to bring a literacy coach on?
Mm-hmm.
What does that entail? Are they a administrator, or are they a teacher?
No, teacher, teacher, coach. Much like, much like, uh, Ms. Cooper at the, at the elementary school. She's our math coach.
Well, my question is, are they paid a teacher salary, or are they paid an administrator salary?
Unit A.
Excuse me?
Unit A position.
So that would be a teacher?
Yeah, it's a coach position.
Okay. Um, do we have someone in mind in the district so that if we are going to be making a cut of a position, they will transition to the said literacy coach?
It's too early to say that, we have to post the position and, and, and things like that. We have to get the initial budget approved, then we have to post the position, see if we have any qualified applications, I mean, we.
It's a long.
It's a process, yeah.
I just wasn't sure if someone had received that certification, and they might have had that expressed interest, or.
Yeah, well, no, we need to post that position, yep.
Was on the radar. That was my question.
Yep. Well, I think it's, I think it's, what's important to keep and remember, and on, what's on the radar, is there is a literacy bill that is coming full steam ahead from the legislation, and is going to be a requirement of all districts with partially unfunded mandates and expectations of every district in the Commonwealth, and we need to be prepared for when that comes. There's been some opposition to that bill, uh, by different groups, including the MAS C, as well as the MAS S, um, and the bill still has traction, is gaining legs and gaining momentum. So there is going to be some kind of literacy legislation that comes down the pike, of which we're going to have to respond to and check the boxes and make sure we are in full compliance. So, this literacy coach is, is more important now than ever. Uh, and we've, and this is something we talked about for years, and now with this legislation coming, we absolutely need it, so. Uh, but yeah, it's a process.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
I don't have any questions, but thank you, Mr. Messina, I know this has been a lot.
I have a question. Joe, just in general, what's the enrollment, uh, year-to-year you're projecting?
Um, we're at 16.
I was going to say 15, 90?
No, I, uh, the increase, the decrease in enrollment year over year?
Oh, um, we can get that trend, I don't have that, those numbers off the top of my head.
I, I, I think we can speak to the fact that based upon, um, what the school building authorities did for some lead-out projections based upon the middle school building, they're trending to see some increases in numbers over the next coming years.
Yeah, 10 to 15 years.
Right, which we haven't seen at this time, and this model doesn't reflect any major enrollment changes, but as, as the Superintendent mentioned, as the kindergarten enrollments start, and you start getting in a new population of students, if it's a larger class, if those needs are a little more advanced, that's what we don't know yet. And that's why we, we build a model on February 27th, and, you know, it's a good shell of a model to get us to a budget figure, but until we open the doors in August and we see what we have, that's when we know what we may need to shift or what we may need to look at. It is a, it's, it's a very flowing document, the budget isn't something that we can just build and, and say we're done, and we're going to spend like, just as we planned. I've, I've done this 23 years now, it's never been just like we planned. It's never even close to just what we planned.
Thank you.
Um, and you just have to have that sort of elasticity within your own operation to say, if this, if this is an issue, where do we go? What do we look at? What programs, you know, where are our strengths, where are our weaknesses? And I, I think Superintendent said once, adjust the deck chairs, which.
Just, just to add to the enrollment piece is an interesting piece, because that's essentially what your Chapter 70 funding is tied to. Um, and there's been a lot of talk now that, uh, I think, uh, many districts across the Commonwealth recognize that Chapter 70, uh, the formula needs to be overhauled, needs an absolute overhaul, and now there's a little bit of momentum on the State House to support some kind of positive, uh, committee to come together and really look at that and assess the Chapter 70 forming, formula. What's interesting is, you know, the Chapter 70 number, money that we've received over the years has gone up minimally, and it's tied to enrollment, but what, what can't be measured really is, is, is the cost of out-of-district tuition for special education students, as well as those transportation costs, and those seem to go up exponentially. Last year went up by 14.2%. Um, so tying it to enrollment is, is one thing, but to really understand the student population and the needs is a whole nother thing, and, and the money doesn't flow in the same way, uh, in, with the same metric, I guess. You know, they have a certain number of dollars for, for each student, uh, but not the needs of the student, and that's where we're really running into problems, uh, as school districts across the Commonwealth.
I have another question, if you don't mind?
If I could just add to that real quick, is our head count's not based on student population, it's based on student needs. So even if our, even if our enrollment goes down, if the needs of the kids go up, and we, we have specialists that are required and so on, our head count could actually rise, not fall, based on the needs of the children, so.
That's a good point.
I just wanted to throw that out there, so. But go ahead, Beth.
Um, is this taking into consideration that it's a negotiation year, and the teachers' salaries will probably be going up?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, we know, we, we have collected, borrowing with both Unit A, which is teachers, and Unit D, which is paraprofessionals this year as well. And that begins this week.
Do the, do the coaches also get some type of raise as well?
They are part of Unit A.
They're a part of Unit A, okay, because in my district, they're different.
Yep.
They're part B.
We don't have a B.
Yeah, we were B, so.
I have a question about the sped stabilization, so if we use the full 449, does that leave no money in the stabilization fund?
Correct.
Does that leave us vulnerable next year?
Yes.
That's a good question.
I think that's one of the things we talk about, when we talk about stabilization funds, you know, I think on the town side, help me, I think that they try to build it up to about 7%.
Seven and a half, I think, is the target.
So I think in a perfect world, we'd want our special ed stabilization to be at 7.5% if we could get to that number, and I don't know exactly what that number is, but it's a conversation we need to continue to have, because as we talk about, um, hypothetically, and our, and our district tuition could be 300, $500,000 for one student, that doesn't count transportation, that could be residential program. So, there is volatility, and, 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 as you know, it could change tomorrow.
So that's part of my question, is that, is that money, is that figure include what we expect to have for sped expenses next year? Does that not leave any room for somebody moving into district and having that increase?
Mr. Messina, go ahead, you work closely with Ms. Atlantic on this, I know.
Correct. This, this, the number for out-of-district tuitions and the number used to balance the budget tonight represents what we know to be our roster challenges at this time. A move-in comes in, yes, we may need to look at something, again, this is, this is the model tonight. We had a move-in a few years back on August 17th, I think it was, um, just in time for the school year to start up. It doesn't include anybody that we haven't identified that may need a placement at this time. So, does it leave us vulnerable? It leaves us open for additional costs that we will need to find another funding source.
Okay.
Um, would I recommend making reductions in other places to anticipate something like that? Not tonight.
So.
And I think that's, that's the key, right? We're going to, we watch as, you say, I'll tell you, it's a living, breathing document, we follow it all year long, and if, if something shifts, we'll be back before this committee saying, we need to pivot here, and we need to do something.
And just one final add-on to that, do we have the appropriate staff for the sped needs, uh, rest of the students?
We do.
Okay.
We do, we're well-staffed, yep.
What about the rest of the paras and teachers?
We are in a good staffing situation right now.
Excellent. Thanks, Joe, great job.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the members of our Finance Committee here tonight?
Do, uh, I do have one question.
Yeah.
Do we, uh, take, uh, special need kids from other towns?
No.
No?
Well, let me rephrase that, if we had school choice, we, we potentially could. But, and we do have school choice right now, grades, we have a couple slots in, a couple slots in the middle school, a couple slots in high school, so we do have a school choice program.
I wonder, because I always hear that Tinsborough has a, uh, special aid for kids that are special, have special needs.
Yeah. If they got in as part of our school choice program, yep.
Yeah.
And that's a blind admission process, so.
And I can say that school choice does have an element of, its base figure is, is $5,000 per student, but they also have what they call a special education incremental tuition increase. So we will actually file, if, if there's a school choice student that is having additional services, we file a report with the state, and we get additional school choice monies based upon that student's needs. So it, it isn't capped at that $5,000 if a student that is school choice from another district has additional needs.
Thank you.
Is that it? Well, thank you, Mr. Messina, again, for, uh, all your hard work putting this together, you and your staff.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much. Going back to our regular scheduled programming Subcommittee update, we have none at this time. Unfinished business, Dr. Flanagan.
Thank you, we'll jump right into the MSBA update at this time. Uh, I will not read specifically what's going on at each, um, building, Building A, Building B, and Building C, and go to the next slide. Thanks. Um, ongoing work, roof, interior, electrical, framing, all going very well. Um, yesterday, I'll tell you that JCJ did come, Emily and Nikki, the, our interior designers for JCJ, the furniture did arrive, uh, as planned last week, and Emily and Nikki were here yesterday to, uh, to facilitate a staff meeting at TMS, to really educate the staff about the potential and opportunities with some of the furniture and the flexible seating, and how, how things nest, and how they stack, and how, uh, they can be interchangeable and collapsible, and, uh, it was, it was a great presentation that they made. Additionally, at the end of that meeting, a survey was emailed to every staff member who will have access to the trial classroom over the next several weeks, and they'll have an opportunity to provide feedback and input as to what they like, what they'd like to see, and, and really kind of go from there. March 11th, the entire middle school staff in two different waves will be able to do the building walkthrough that you all did a few weeks ago, so they'll get to be in it and feel it and, and understand what, uh, see the progress, and it's going to be exciting for them. Then on March 20th, JCJ will come back. on March 20th, J C J will come back with the information from the survey, and they will sit and really talk about and show the teachers what a typical classroom will. At this time, they'll also sit with some of our specialists, our STEM teacher, to really understand the needs there, art teacher, music teacher, those specialty programs, to really talk about what it's going to look like in those areas, nursing, counseling, those types of things. So, a lot of ongoing work. It's kind of exciting to kind of move towards what the inside of the school will look like. So, things are going well there. And I think we have a couple pictures of furnitures that were dropped. And again, as they remind us, disregard the colors, because we get any color we want, but the furniture is there, and the teachers had a great time really getting their hands on it and really trying it out. So, we will take a field trip tonight over, and you will also get the opportunity to do that. So it's exciting. It's moving in the right direction.
Awesome. It is exciting. Teaching and learning update. Mr. Woodlock.
Thank you. I'll be brief today. Just a quick update on some things that are ongoing. As I've talked about on a number of occasions, we utilize the Education Commonwealth project for a school quality measure survey, which was distributed at both the high school and the middle school right before vacation. So I'll be in contact with them soon to begin looking at our data board from that survey, and looking at the data and examining it, identifying whatever it happens to lead us to. With Ms. Lewenzic, we've met, following up on our presentation last time, on our SDI and where we are right now, making sure that we're going to continue making progress. We've met with all administrators in each of the three buildings, talked about where we are, where we need to go, and make sure that we're still making progress towards those goals that we've come up with in the summertime. Our work with the Inclusive Academy through DESI is ongoing and resumes this March. Our liaison from the Inclusive Academy will be here, meeting with administrators, and then with our MTSS team. In March, we're going to be looking at our data from, that we've been collecting throughout the year on student progress, so we're all looking forward to that. And lastly, just a heads up, I mentioned this last time, but our student opportunity plan has been drafted, and will need to be approved by this board. And I hope to have that in front of you for the next meeting on March 12th. We're making some revisions, and hopefully it'll meet with your approval.
Awesome.
Any questions for me?
Will we get that ahead of time?
Yeah, we'll make sure it's in the folder. One more thing I wanted to share, and Bari talked a little bit about it earlier, but Mr. Messina did take the lead on following up on conversations we had here with our Kingsborough Elementary students in our previous meeting, and made sure that their voices were heard. So I don't know if you wanted to follow up on that.
Sure. So I think this got like 10,000 hits on social media. I don't know. It's like, I sent this to you, and it was all over social media. So I don't know if I blame you for that, or Mrs. Gavino, or somebody else, but Mr. Mears and myself did go over, as promised, with the elementary school students that presented, and we had a great breakfast meeting. We brought some test items for them to try, in addition to other breakfast treats. And they actually got to listen to Mr. Mears talk about how she builds the menu, how she has to work through Whitson's menu calendar and Whitson's nutritionist to actually get the menu together for the students to enjoy. We talked a lot about chicken nuggets, which seemed to be the bane of everybody's existence. I did find out one particular student didn't like chicken nuggets whatsoever, based upon a much earlier incident, and wasn't our chicken nuggets. She just wanted them wiped off the face of the earth. So, she understood where we were coming from, and we understood where she was coming from. I think we talked about the mac and cheese one student gets at home is homemade, which, sorry, we, you know, we're not going to get them homemade like they get at their house, because I'm sure their parents are cooking for a few, and our workers are cooking for 800. But it was a great meeting. I love going out to the school and sitting with the kids and getting some of their perspective, being to remove some myths about uncooked chicken, because nothing in the elementary school, none of our schools, has uncooked chicken. Everything that comes into the building is fully cooked. There was apparently an incident the day before I went about some cheese sticks that were given to the students that had the manufacturer date on them, that was being interpreted by the students as expiration dates, which, you know, I don't think anybody in our cafeterias will serve expired food. I know they won't. And we got to talk about some of their menu options, what they may want to see. One of the most interesting ones I got for a suggestion was shepherd's pie, which Mr. Mears is actually working towards maybe developing a student selection for lunch one day in March. You know, as chosen by T E S students, shepherd's pie. And it's great to have that type of feedback from the students, and it's great to hear them come in here, and certainly it was excellent to follow up with them, social media notwithstanding.
All right, thank you. Mr. Woodlock, that's it for you tonight?
That's it for me. Thank you.
We did...
Finance?
Right down to finance. We're right back to you, Mr. Messina.
Okay.
Tell us how much shepherd's pie is going to cost.
We'll get it in there. We'll get the best money the state can give us. Signing of bills. Tonight, we presented 11 bill warrants to the school committee tonight. As always, the list of warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts are in your drive. For signing of payroll, there were two payrolls since your last meeting, payroll of February 12th and February 26th. Again, in the drive is the list of warrant numbers and amounts. And that is it for me tonight.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Messina. School committee discussion. Bari?
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Bari?
Thank you, Mr. Messina, for all the work you've put into the budget and trying to get that wrangled. That, no, that's a ton of effort. But also for the additional time you put in with spending with the students and being able to put time into that as well. I know it's important to them, and I know, you know, it worked out very, very well, minus the social media for you. And thank you for FinCom for coming tonight. Appreciate that.
Thank you to the FinCom for coming tonight. It's always great when we have these joint meetings. I appreciate you being here. And congratulations to our sports teams for making it on to the playoffs, and look forward to seeing the results of the playoffs, and good luck. That's all I have.
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
I'm all set. Thank you.
I'm all set.
I'd like to thank you for coming, and, Mr. Messina, you did a great job as usual. And I have to say, your smile in that picture was amazing. It was awesome. It made me so happy, looking at how happy you were to be with the kids and chatting with them. I also would like to wish luck to our sports teams who are moving on, and also the METG for their upcoming competition play, and I hope everyone has a good week.
Thanks for all your hard work, Joe. Great job, as always. Thank you to members of FinCom for coming tonight. I think these meetings are really valuable and help. Really cool moment last week, we had the boys and girls basketball teams win their league championships on the same court, back-to-back, and they all stayed to support each other. So it was really cool. So good luck in the state tournaments, starting this week, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Messina, for all your hard work on the budget. We know it's a lot, and I just appreciate all that you've done. And thank you for meeting with the students, too. I know that they enjoy that as well. Thank you, members of FinCom, for coming tonight and joining us for the budget presentation, and good luck as well to everybody competing in state tournaments and METG this weekend.
Can I say one more thing? I'd also wish luck to the DECA group who's going next week.
Correct. Thank you. If you have any questions, please let us know. We'll be happy to follow up with you. Thanks for being here tonight, though. Important announcement, March 5th, there is no school. It's an election day. It compromises the security of the school having people in there. We close down the kitchen and things like that, so no school on March 5th. That's on the calendar. Just wanted to put it out there as another reminder.
Bari, you can still come, though. I know how much you like.
I just want snow days.
Senioritis setting in.
Yes.
Senioritis. It's real.
Thank you to members of FinCom, again, for coming this evening. And good luck to all our seniors. You should be receiving your rewards back or your notifications from your colleges here this month. So good luck to them. Apply for scholarships. There's a lot of money available to Kingsborough students, so fill out the forms, get them in there before it's too late. Thank you, Mr. Messina, for all the work on the budget, and Dr. Flanagan, your whole staff, teachers, everybody. And that will do it. We do not have a need for executive session, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Take care, 700. Thank you, and have a good night.